I call the order of the meeting of the common council for Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have 12 members present in the room and 12 members present and voting in civic court.
Thank you, Clerk. Please now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation offered by Alder Scannell.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alder Scannell, you have the floor.
Okay, Your Honor, I have a cold, so for once I'm going to shut up, and I would just like us to just take a moment of reflection. And of course, you can reflect on whatever you want, but I think to give you a little direction in that if we could just reflect on why we're here, why we're Alders. You know, if we can focus on city business, I think there's a lot we can accomplish together, even though we don't see eye to eye. Matter of fact, because we don't see eye to eye, I know some of you are taller and shorter than me, so we're not gonna, so, but that makes good policy. So, if we just reflect, and I made just a short audio for us to reflect with, I hope you appreciate it. I spent a lot of time on it. Some time on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Until approval of the minutes. Motion to approve made by Melinda, or Alder Eck. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose nay. The ayes have it. Approval of the agenda.
I'd like to amend the agenda, Your Honor.
What's your amendment, Alder?
I'd like to move Park, if it's okay, to right after K.
Moving the Parks report, which is, what's the item for Parks?
Okay, we could just do the whole item.
No, what's the report? Letter? Q?
Q.
All right. So the amendment is to place Report Q right after Report K. And that was seconded by, was there a second for that?
Johnson.
Seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. The amendment is adopted.
Motion to approve as amended.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve the agenda as amended, seconded by Alder Weary. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Pose nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda is approved. Report by the mayor. I will keep things brief, but just want to let you all know how excited I am to be back with you. We've got a lot of work to do as a city, and as Alder Scannell said, there's going to be a diversity of opinion reflected among the council here, which is a really good thing. But I think the, you know, the test of a functional legislative body and a functional executive is whether or not you can maintain a good relationship in the face of some policy disagreements, which are going to arise on a pretty regular basis, no matter which community you're talking about. So, just speaking for myself, I know I'm committed to doing that. Haven't always been perfect in that regard, but I'm recommitting myself to really working constructively with all of you and looking forward to doing that over the course of the next four years. Had a number of good conversations with Alders. The council president and I have been exchanging messages even before the results of the election and just acknowledging that there's a lot that we agree on. You know, over 90% of the items that are actually coming before this body are sort of adopted with consent, or, you know, without any real debate. And so we've done a lot of good things over the last four years. I'm hoping for a lot more to come over the next four, but none of it's possible without the support of this body here. So looking forward to continuing and strengthening that working relationship. And then just one comment on an item that we have before us. We've got the Violence Prevention Grant that has been brought forward in collaboration with community economic development, but a lot of really solid work on the part of our police department, especially Commander Warwick, who's been on top of this for several years at this point. And so the fact that that grant money is before us is a really great thing, and just asking for your support on that. With that, we'll move into announcements from the council. Alder Eck and then Alder Stoyer.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your words. I appreciate it. I have two different things. Excuse me. One of them is I want to announce the National Day of Prayer Luncheon. It's on Thursday, May 4th. The hosts are former mayor Jim Schmitt, Jim and his wife Donna. And there's a guest speaker, Jan Ottinger, from the Cup of Joy. And you can find out more information. And all the proceeds go to the N E W Community Shelter. Uh, what? Oh, it's at the Riverside Ballroom, and it's at 11:30. And the phone number is 920-437-3766, extension 103 for tickets. And then the second is, I wanted to express my condolences and my prayers for the family of somebody who was very involved in our community, Taku Ronzman. She was, she had a business, Rhythm and Tunes, with Ms. Taku, and her and I were on some community committees together. And also, she was the, she started the Fireman's Park Neighborhood Association and was the president for a long time. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that. She passed away last, excuse me, last week.
Yeah, really community-minded person.
Yes.
She'll be missed by all of us. Thanks, Alder. Alder Stoyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Kind of piggybacking on what Alder Scannell said without the animal sounds, I just wanted to state that I'm also hoping and looking for communication, open transparency, nonpartisanship, but just working on the issues that we have. I think we can do it, and, you know, I think that's very important. I also would like to talk about Earth Day coming up. Sustainability Commission has done some things. You can kind of look at their webpage, but the mayor thankful that you sent out an email about some of the events that are coming up. And there are several from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Ken Ewers, Tanisra Park, Newbury Conservancy, and the Wildlife Sanctuary. There will be either cleanup or removing invasive species, little shoreline-type work, so bring some boots and gloves and pitch in, so. And I also knew Taku as well. She was quite a lady.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And Alder Stoyer, he mentioned events that are being organized by our Conservation Corps, so I want to throw that open to our council, but also the public. It's a really volunteer-oriented endeavor all the time, and especially with some of these events, it'd be great to see some force turn up for that. So, thanks for mentioning. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congrats, you know, on coming back, and I look forward to a productive year in Green Bay, and I was rooting for y'all along.
I knew it.
But on a serious note, congrats, and I look forward to this year. More seriously, though, I just wanted to, there was a pedestrian, a woman killed earlier today on a hit-and-run right in between my district and Alder Johnson's, and just keep her and her family and our thoughts and prayers. So, thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I actually have two. The first is, one of my constituents, Ahmad Rivera Wagner, received the 2022 Shining Star Award from the Brown County United Way for serving as the Chair of the Regional Advocacy Council for two years, where he helped to lead the group to receive their latest organizational grant to create a mobile resource center that brings support directly to those impacted. And on another note, it was just two months ago, I asked for a minute of silence for a Milwaukee police officer who had been killed in the line of duty. Sadly, just over a week ago, we were again reminded that evil can happen in any size community in this state, no matter its demographic makeup. Even this week, one of our Green Bay officers was injured in the line of duty attempting to do their job to protect us. I'd like to take a moment of silence to remember the sacrifices of Officers Hunter Shield of the Cameron Police Department and Emily Breidenbach of the Chedek Police Department.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Campbell?
Mr. Mayor, I think it's only appropriate. We've talked in front of the council chambers here before, eye to eye, and I told you what I thought we needed to do if you won, or if someone else won. I'm a man of my word, so I know between you and I, we've got some work to do. So, I look forward to working toward that. Hopefully, it stays positive. I'll do my best to do the best for this city, and I hope you will too. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, a lot of times, what's acknowledged by the public in terms of what we do is the work that we do here in front of this body, because that's what's most visible. But what oftentimes is not seen is the work that goes on behind the scenes. And so I just wanted to call attention today. I want to thank Chief Davis, who I see is not back there, but he did some work with facilitating a group of individuals, about 20 of us, around some of the challenges that we've seen at St. John's Park, and how do we come together and acknowledge the needs of everybody within that dialogue, and how are we equal contributors to that solution? And I think it's important to acknowledge that in about two weeks, April 30th, is when obviously the shelters will no longer do the overnight stays. I mean, there's some other things that happen throughout the summer months, but there's going to be some additional needs in our community. And right now, it is a nationwide epidemic where the number of individuals that are unsheltered are really skyrocketing. And so it's really going to take a community lift to get behind that issue and to solve that problem. And I don't know if that item on Parks Committee will get pulled, so I wanted to at least take the opportunity now to say, hey, two weeks, just kind of everyone have that in the back of your mind, and support our shelters whenever it makes sense for you and the individuals that they serve, because it's going to take a community solution.
Thanks, Alder. Any other announcements? Alder Burnett?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate you on your reelection and look forward to a real positive year, working together with you, working on ways to improve our city. I do know that Alder Eck and Stoyer, Weary had mentioned, and Galvin, some of the tragedies that we have faced, but today, especially with some of our first responders who had to respond to that tragedy, and they do it every day. And we don't always hear about the things that they do, but truly miraculous things that they're, they do routinely. So I just want to extend our thoughts and prayers to them as well, our first responders who do such a wonderful job, police, fire, and EMT, and any other person that responds to some of the things that happen in a city of our size. Thank you.
Well said. Thanks, Alder. Any other words? Seeing none, we'll move along to appointments. Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve the new appointment, seconded by Alder Galvin. Any comments? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose nay. The ayes have it, and that appointment has been confirmed. Onto reappointments. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Any comments here? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Pose nay. The ayes have it, and those reappointments are confirmed. Alder Stoyer? Is a point of order?
I think on this, but, you know, voting for Brown County Planning, I just wanted a heads-up while we're voting for Plan Commission, you know, the Brown County. What's that? Yeah, the county part of it. Just a refresher why we're doing that.
Yeah, so we have municipal membership for Brown County Planning.
All right.
And so we customarily make these appointments, yeah.
Right. Thank you.
You bet. Onto public hearings. We've got miscellaneous ordinance number 04-23, an ordinance adopting an amendment to the Smart Growth 2022 Comprehensive Plan of the City of Green Bay pertaining to properties located near the intersections of Vanderbrack, North Clay, and Wyssy Streets. It's parcel number 20-350, 20-349, 20-381, 20-382, and 20-383. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak to this item? Anyone here who'd like to speak to this item? Anyone here who'd like to speak to this item? Clerk, let the record reflect, there's no one here to speak on this public hearing. Now we're on to ordinance, a second reading for adoption. Alder Scannell makes a motion to suspend the rules, take up these items with one roll called vote. That was seconded by Alder Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Pose nay. The ayes have it. The rules are suspended. Motion to not made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will use the board.
You may vote.
It's not appearing?
It's not appearing.
No?
Let me try it again. Do you see it now?
Yep.
Okay. And Alder Campbell, how would you like to be reported? Thank you. Okay, display.
And those ordinances are adopted unanimously. Now we are on Report Q, the report of the Parks Committee. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Weary. Items here to be held separately? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose nay. The ayes have it, and that report has been approved. Onto the report of the Improvement and Services Committee for March 29, 2023, and April 12, 2023. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Items here to be handled separately? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose nay. The ayes have it, and those reports have been approved. Onto Protection and Policy. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Items to be held separately is one. Any others? Seeing none others. All in favor of approving the remainder of that report, signify by saying aye. Pose nay. The ayes have it. That report has been approved with the exception of Item One. Alder Johnson? Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve that item, seconded by Alder Stoyer. Item was pulled by Alder Johnson. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Can we just get some clarity from legal? The verbiage on this and the agenda suggested quasi-judicial, but can we get some clarity? Is, when you have these appeals, is it a quasi-judicial hearing, or is it just a decision?
Attorney, co-chair?
Sure, Alder Johnson. A quasi-judicial hearing was held at the Protection Policy Committee on March 27th, so this is in fact the recommendation, reviewing the recommendation from the Protection Policy Committee. We are not redoing a quasi-judicial hearing here. I think the closed session language remains. If there's any discussion that's necessary, that would be of a nature that we need to go in closed session.
Okay, great. And this body has the ability to either uphold or overturn that recommendation? Is that correct?
Yes, it's a final decision.
Okay, thank you. So I assume because staff has already taken care of this at the committee level, that there's nothing that the staff needs to do at this point, but if we want to hear from the public, we can do that?
Yes, we're not taking additional testimony.
But if you'd like to open it up for public comment, you may. But just as a reminder, we're not adding new things to the record. The record is all the materials that were provided and the testimony that was given at committee.
Correct, understood. Okay. So I would like to make a motion to open the floor to hear from interested parties. To clarify, for those in the room, this is regarding the appeal, the excess animal permit.
Okay, there's a motion to open the floor by Alder Johnson. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Weary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. The floor is open.
You can speak, if you'd like.
So if anyone would like to speak to this item, just approach the podium.
Well, I have a prepared speech.
Yes. Yep, you can deliver any comments at the podium. Just a reminder that we allow for three minutes for public comments. Correct. And if you could just state your name and address for us.
My name is Ellen Bjork. I own the home at 515 13th Avenue, Green Bay. I'd like to start by saying that you cannot deny me based on my attitude, my smart mouth, the fact that I swear, or anything of that nature. You can only deny me based on the conditions of my home and how I take care of my animals. My service animal does absolutely not count, therefore it is a five-dog permit. My service animal, Willard, does not count in any way, shape, or form. He is considered a piece of equipment in order to help me with my disability. Okay? You can refer to the ADA manual. Several ordinances and laws were broken by the City of Green Bay in this entire ordeal. Okay? First of all, I was cited by the Animal Control Officer. It was brought to light during the video that was played while I was in court under Judge Biggett, I guess is how you pronounce his name. I'm really not sure, and I don't care. The videotape of, from her body cam, February 2nd, when she was in my home, clearly showed that she cited me for the multi-dogs, two identical citations, okay, equalling like $700, because she said I was getting hostile. No other reason. Okay? You can't do that. Can't do it. And then, when I was in court, Judge Giggit, or whatever his name is, let those citations go through because of the same reason. And he asked me what my disability was. Illegal! And he asked, he said to me, maybe you're just too disabled to own dogs. Utterly, utterly, utterly illegal. Judicial misconduct. Okay? We got big problems here in the city of Green Bay. Big, fat, ugly problems. Okay? So she did two inspections at my home, one in November and one on February 2nd, without making an appointment. Wrong, bad. Okay? That's a no-no. And then she said that there was a chihuahua turd in the back landing. Oh, no! Holy shit! And a bag of garbage. Okay? It was zero degrees that day, and there was a bag of garbage at the back door, and a chihuahua turd. Oh, no! Call the SWAT team. Okay? So that's what she said was the big, big problem. And she was supposed to, if you'll look in the information that I passed out to you, give me 72 hours to clean that up. She did not do that. This is a clear case of a setup.
Ma'am, your three minutes have expired.
All right. Well, she set me up. I embarrassed her friend, Dr. Becky Croll, and she set me up. That's what this boils down to. Y'all have got me in your crosshairs, and I'm sick of it, and I'm not going to stand for it anymore. I'm a good person. I own a beautiful, beautiful, clean home. I invited all of y'all. Brian, where are you? Brian, you should have come out to see the truth.
Are there questions from the council?
Guyzim is a good alderman. He's my friend. He's still my friend. He's sitting right there.
Alder Eck?
Ma'am, I just have a question. And I was at the committee meeting, so there were some things that were answered there, but, you know, just so for everybody else to hear. Were you, because you had mentioned that you didn't let your dogs out during the winter.
That is absolutely not true. You are exaggerating the truth, ma'am.
I thought that's what you had said.
That is absolutely not true. If it's 30 below, no, I'm not going to let a chihuahua go out and suffer.
Were you using puppy pads?
Yeah. But as soon as it gets warm enough, absolutely, they'll go out. But if it's 30 below, no, I'm not going to make a chihuahua go out in 30 below. Would you?
I'm just asking for the record.
That's abuse.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other?
I'm a good dog owner. I'm not going to do that crap.
Any other questions from council? All right. Thank you again for your testimony. Any other speakers?
Lot of ordinances and laws broken, and it's all going to get reported. Green Bay, bad on you. Shame on you.
I apologize, you friend. Guyzim, 1121 13th Avenue, Green Bay, Wisconsin. I'm meeting with you folks more than I thought I ever was going to, but I'm here today because I'd like to put some perspective, some historical perspective to this situation. The lady, of course, is distraught, as can be. You should all know that she's been taking care of all these animals for about 20 years. I was on the council and on the committee that gave her a permit for four dogs. You have to understand, she has five plus a service dog. The five dogs, their total weight doesn't equal one medium-sized dog. These are four little dogs and one tiny bit bigger. And she's been taking care of them their whole lives.
And they're all rescued.
You've got to be quiet.
I'm sorry.
But, and of course, she's a rescue dog artist, and she got a permit to keep four dogs. And the only reason I got involved is because she called me, and I was the alderman. I've been in the house probably 10 times in my life. Three of those have been in the last couple of months. And I can tell you that the house is in good shape. It does not have odor. She takes care of her dogs. When you knock on the door, they all howl. But as soon as you sit down and they see you're not a threat to her, they're busy protecting her, they're all quiet. Everything's good. And I think she's invited you to come to her house. I think you should do that before you make a decision, if you feel you need to. But she has been doing a service to the community, and I'm here to tell you, and I think Brian will probably say the same thing that I'm going to say, I've never had a complaint by any neighbor about the care of the animals or any problems in the neighborhood. I think she's given you a couple of letters from her neighbors. This is a, this is a, it's a problem, because I think it's an excessive prosecution, in my estimation. I think you got to look at the big picture. Here's a woman who has dedicated herself to taking care of these animals. She did get a permit, oh, I don't know, 15 years ago, whatever, and I was on the committee at the time, and it went through, and we've never had any problems. So if there's not a problem, why are we in search of a problem? And she was, had a, there was a referral on her, and the animal control people came there. If you look at the tape, they were civil to each other most of the conversation. And it's true, when dogs died, all the dogs she had when she started have all died, and she's replaced them. And she's, by and large, licensed them, but she did not come back and renew to get permission. When a dead one died, a new dog take its place. And she went to court. She, the judge fined her $1 for the lack of one of the dogs being registered. And she was obviously guilty of not having a permit to keep five dogs.
Oh, and then I got billed.
You can't talk right now.
I'm sorry.
This is the problem. It's an emotional problem. And of
I agree.
And of course, I have had no problems with Ellen other than this. And I think you should take your time and look into it a little more carefully. and look into it a little more carefully.
Thank you, Mr. Zima.
She's taking good care of the dogs. She'll continue to take good care of it, but it's up to you to make the difference.
Mr. Zima, your time is expired, are there questions from council?
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. Hey, I just wanna say, the staff isn't here to make your decisions for you. It's for you to make the decision.
Any questions from council? Alder Stoyer?
Mr. Zima, thanks for coming in.
Yeah, nice to see you again.
And I, you know, I was not at the meeting, but I tried to read some of the things on, on this case, and I'm in your estimation, or when did this come into play? You're saying over a period of time, everything was fine, you, we she had got a permit some years ago, everything seemed to be working out, so why, why the problem? Ma'am, I'm talking to Mr. Zima. Then it'll all open up the floor again, I guess.
You see the problem, but
I mean, in your estimation?
There has not been a problem at all, until November of last year, on a welfare check, the officer went there, and I, because you can see how she talks when she wants to, but she was by and large very irrational.
I just wanted to know in that moment.
How she handled it, but it's it's not a problem. The only problem, she has to pay fines now, because she didn't take care of some technical things. Of which she's taken care of now. But she needs your permission to keep these five little tiny dogs, that don't amount to 25 pounds altogether.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Alder, Alder Johnson?
Anyway, I, I urge you to let, let her keep the dogs, she's had them for 20 years. Did you have a question, Your Honor?
Alder Johnson? Thank you, former Alder Zima. Of course, with, with the committee having been a quasi-judicial hearing, I know the members of the committee couldn't really visit her home, but you, at the committee level, had said that you had the opportunity to do so, is that correct?
In the last three months, I've been there about three times.
Yeah, and, and in your experience while you were there, did you see anything that seemed out of order, that was problematic, that was an issue, that would warrant removing the excess pets?
The, the house was, was clean. It's, she's got a lot of knickknacks and stuff like that, but the house is basically clean. I don't think you'd, any rational person would find any problem with it. I, I think you should just give her the, I, make, make a deal with her. As, as the dogs die, don't replace it, and do that kinda thing. We've done that at the Protection Welfare Committee in the past, had some agreements. But they're just tiny little dogs.
Good, thank you. Alder Scannell? Just to make sure, she called you and you came over, correct? I mean, that was how you okay, just wanted to make sure of that, yep, thank you.
Anything else?
She called me about the problem, so.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay. Thanks for the testimony. Are there any other questions? I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Motion to close the floor made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, the ayes have it, the floor is closed. Alder Johnson?
Yep, thank you, Mayor.
Just a couple thoughts, so hopefully you all had an opportunity to watch the committee, I, I watched the video on this, and as, as Mr. Zima said, it's, it's an emotional issue, and I don't think any of us would quite frankly sit on our hands if we were talking about our dogs. And so, the first thing, you know, that I wanna do is, is kinda commend Officer Mavis, she did what she's supposed to do. Right, we, we talked about this with the Landmarks Commission as a comparable example. The ordinance is set, and it is, it is the responsibility of our staff to enforce the ordinance. But as, as was alluded to just a few moments ago, the staff makes those recommendations based on the ordinances that we pass. But as a body, we have the ability and the authority to contemplate things from a different purview. And, and we get to contemplate those things. Officer Mavis made the recommendation that she is obligated and required to do. So I have no qualms with that. But like I said, similarly, the Landmarks Commission, it was a near unanimous support to really go in a different direction, because common sense kinda stepped in and dictated that maybe something else oughta look a little bit differently. Alder Stoyer, you were asking the question, and I wanna point this out, what, what kind of initiated all of this? It was a welfare check. That was in the documents that was provided to us. This isn't like some of the other situations that we've had before us, where we had a vicious dog, where a dog bit somebody, or a dog was running loose in the neighborhood. That's not what prompted any of this. What prompted all of this was a welfare check, and our, our, the, not Officer Mavis, but other police officers are the ones that paid a visit to the home, and then that's where they observed the extra dogs, and then of course it went through the channels and was reported to Officer Mavis. So, so I call that out because there were no problems as it relates to the animals. So, we received emails as a council from the appellant, people that had vouched that the animals are cared for, people that had vouched the neighbors who had said they've had zero problems with what's going on over there. The shelters had written letters to support, and, and that by and large, folks, there really have been no complaints. So really what was in the report is that, hey, the house seemed a little bit cluttered, and there was a smell of urine. I tell you what, if we were gonna criminalize hoarding, you could put half the city behind bars, probably. And who of us who owns a dog has never had a situation where a dog's gone to the bathroom in the house? And so, of course, it's up to, to us, that's our personal business, how we wanna I mean, maintain our homes, and how we wanna keep them clean. There's certainly, she even admitted to it. She's probably guilty of some abrasive behavior, anybody who watched the video would know that. I would even attest to that with my interaction in the hallway. But that's not what we're here to debate. We're not here to debate whether or not we like someone, we're here to talk about the rule of law. And she certainly didn't do herself any favors, but when it comes to the law, and of course we don't have jurisdiction over the citations, that's a municipal court situation, unfortunately, we, we, we don't have any oversight of that, and we can't do anything about that right now as a body. And that's gonna have to run its course. But what we do have the ability to talk about is the appeal. And so, all of these violations that we've seen in front of us are correctable, in fact, they're easily correctable. Remember the first report that was written to us where it said, where it said, hey, look, here's some of the things that I observed, but nowhere in that report did it make a recommendation for removal of the animals. Nowhere did it say that. That escalated. And when it escalated to the second visit, why did it escalate? Because the paperwork wasn't filed in time. How many times have we sat here and talked about the city having complex processes that we understand, because we're invested in it? But to the average person who deals with this stuff once in a lifetime, it is far more complex. And I want to acknowledge that, that, that is possible, that that is simply what happened in this situation. If this is really gonna boil down to a matter of filing proper paperwork, we can work with her, we can help with that, right? So I, I, I am, I am for the appeal, meaning that, that right now, the, the motion on the floor is to deny the appeal, so I oppose this motion. I would encourage you all to do the same. This individual has previously been approved to have these, these permits. What's happened is those pets have expired, and as a result, so did the permits. Okay? But she's been previously authorized to allow to have these dogs. Now, of course, she's plus one on what was previously authorized, but we've seen no complaints and no problems. Now, as long as it's clear, clearly understood, that when a pet passes, the permit expires, and you have to go through that process to apply for a new one. So it's not really a contingency we have to add, it's already there. The only thing that I would say is I would oppose this and support addition, a, a different motion to, to, to override that, but but just the only contingency that I would say, and I think Mayor, maybe staff can answer this, just that we have to have verification that all of the pets are fully vaccinated. And, and I think that's part of the excess permit clause, so really that's all we gotta do is fill out the application, and in fact, if I'm not mistaken, even the documents, it had said that that documentation had been previously provided, but that's the only contingency that I would request. So as far as I'm concerned, she's not bugging anybody around her, this is happening in her own home, she wants to have these pets, the pets seem to be well cared for. I, I would recommend, in fact, I'll make a motion, it should be to amend Alder's, the motion on the floor. I would just make a motion to approve, to, to amend the motion to approve the appeal as, as submitted.
Alder Johnson makes that motion to, to make that amendment to approve the appeal, is there a second for that? Seconded by Alder Stoyer, discussion on, on the amendment? Alder Scannell?
I oppose the amendment, I stand by the original motion. I think there's a few misconceptions here I'd like to clear up, I think the way some of this information was presented isn't quite accurate. First of all, we talk about a welfare check. We don't talk about the welfare check. What initiated the welfare check was that she called the vets, and said she was, felt like harming herself. That's what initiated the welfare check. Okay? Now, when we talk about the second visit, because of lack of paperwork, that's what initiated the visit. That's not what brought on everything that followed. What brought on everything that followed was the scent of urine and dog feces, not just a little turd, in a, in a, in the house, with a back door that was barricaded, and there was no sign of dog tracks in the backyard. And
No, sorry ma'am, I had Alder Scannell.
And the officer is not allowed to go into the basement. There's evidence that there might have been more in the basement. So, yes, this is not, I think people are, keep bringing up that there's no complaints made. This is not about complaints being made, no. So that's not an issue at all. I don't know why anybody's bringing it up. The issue was, is she capable, I mean, she's got she's got two extra dogs. The permit was for, to have, so she'd have told the four before. Now she has six. So that's a lot of dogs. That's a big responsibility. And it's for the care of the animals, and concern for Mrs. Bjork, who I believe is a wonderful person. I commend her for, you know, her dog rescue efforts, but I think it's gotten to the point where she's overextended herself. And I am very much concerned for her health and the health of those animals, and that's what's at issue here. Not neighbor complaints. There were no neighbor complaints. There, there's, that's not in the equation at all. Let's state to the facts of the matter. There was a healthcare check, because of a call she made to the vets. That healthcare, that healthcare check resulted in a follow-up by our humane officer, which then the humane officer tried to work with her, get the paperwork going and everything. Paperwork didn't fall through, our humane officer followed up, and it was at that point when she was in, that all these other issues followed, which is the main reason for this. Concern for the welfare of the dogs, and Mrs. Bjork.
Does it say I denied that?
Ma'am?
And her erratic behavior has not helped her cause, in that showing she is capable of meeting these responsibilities. It's her mental state that is somewhat unfortunately questioned. We're not sure. So, between, and, and then we want to bring in, yes, the former alder, Mr. Zima. Alder Zima showed up, but that was after she called him. So she had plenty of time to make sure the place was clean, aired out, before she called him and had him come over. So, I mean, when he spoke, I was almost persuaded at committee, to, maybe this was all cleaned up. But then again, as she has stated here, if the temperature's bad, she's gonna let, not let the dogs out. Well, it's worse for the dogs inside than to be outside a little bit. And it, and it just called into question, since the back door was blocked, there was no dog prints in the backyard, it had been quite a while, not just 30-degree below weather, for these dogs to be out.
I question you this during the morning. No, I won't.
So it's a concern here. And yes, this is a terrible responsibility, no one likes doing this, even when the dog has been vicious towards someone. No one likes to have to separate a dog that's been good to a family, but vicious towards someone else. It's, it's tough.
Who was vicious?
But I believe the responsible action here is to deny the appeal. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks Alder, any other comments on the amendment that's been offered by Alder Johnson? Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Who was vicious?
I served on
Talking about, ma'am.
Obviously you can, you can see she's very passionate about this, I mean, anyone else would be, so I served on and chaired protection and the welfare, it used to be called protection of policy, for many years, and on these animal issues, especially we're gonna take away somebody's pets, I always kinda had a checklist, you know, that I went through, and, and one is, you know, is it dangerous? No, that doesn't apply here, so that's, that's out. The neighbor's okay with the situation, yes. The alderman of the district's okay, yes, and that's a big one. Because they, they're in tune often with the neighborhood and the neighbors. And then the former alderman of the district wasn't on my checklist, but I, you know, I very much trust Mr. Zima when it comes to these types of issues, he, he knows the he knew his district very well, still knows it very well. So, those all pass my test. I do think it is a bit of a technicality, as Alder Johnson said, a paperwork issue. I don't wanna sit in judgment of someone's mental state and whether or not they can take care of a few small pets. Boy, that's a fine line to go down sometimes, so I think we correct this paperwork issue. I, I think taking them away corrects a paperwork issue, but I think it does more harm than good. And I don't wanna do more harm than good, so I'm, I'm fine with supporting the motion to approve it.
Thanks Alder, I think Attorney Cochrane had just a note of clarification for us?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention regarding the seizing of the animals that came up at committee. The city isn't, this denying of this appeal or granting the appeal doesn't make a difference whether the animals are removed from the home by law enforcement. We are not in a position to remove her excess animals, she may be subject to additional citations in the future, but the decision here doesn't relate directly to removing the animals, just for a point of clarification. But she could be open to additional citations in the future, if the situation isn't corrected.
Okay.
If, if I could, I appreciate the clarification, Attorney. That would mean probably, I'm sure we would go back and check, I don't know, weekly, what's the fine for every occurrence if you didn't remove it down, so while we might not be taking the animals, it's gonna be a pretty severe financial. Do we know what that fine is?
I can check, I know that Officer Mavis said that in this situation or others, she doesn't cite people more than once a month, just as a matter of practice. But I can check for you and get right back what her citation was.
Thanks for clarification, thanks. I, I, my, my opinion still stands, I support the motion.
Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I tried finding information, I'm surprised inspection wasn't called to go through this, this home, especially if there's a situation of concern about hoarding, which, you know, people can stack up stuff all over the place as much as they want, until it impacts their ability to live, or would impact the security of anybody responding to help them. I had a neighbor that died in their home because they became trapped between the rows of refuse in their home, and they, they died there on the floor. I mean, it's, that's sad. And obviously, no one in the neighborhood knew that was going on. So there's no complaints, much like in this case, no one's complaining. But when I hear that five, six dogs hadn't been outside to go to the bathroom, that's, that's a real concern to me. It's a concern about the physical health of the resident and the animals, and it's a concern about the mental health of the resident and the animals also. You know, I, I can understand where Alder Johnson is coming from, but to just say let's let it happen again, I'd prefer there be some more check and balance. I'd, I'd prefer to see the inspection department give the house a clean bill, and move on from there, let her apply for the, while that's going on, apply for the, the permits, and if she passes and can get the dogs back in there, I'm, I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Thanks Alder, Alder Eck?
And I'm just wondering, is it possible to add on that, like what Mr. Zima said about not adding more animals on? And then, I guess after your speaking, Alder Galvin, about going back and rechecking, is it a way to kinda push it down the road, I guess, and come back and revisit this, just to make sure everything's cleaned up? That's, I just have questions about that.
Those questions for Attorney Cochrane?
Yes.
Attorney Cochrane?
Sure, on the first part, in general, we can't condition permits, but this permit has been mentioned is based on the animals, so we do have like the name and the approximate age of these animals. So upon their death, the permit, the permit for that excess animal would expire. But in terms of conditionalizing that, that the, that the owner can't get more animals, that's not really a condition, but those would also be unpermitted, because the permit is for a specific amount of animals and under their names. And then the second part, if you could repeat, Alder Eck, which was a question about
I guess referring this back, I said pushing it Um, I guess, uh, referring this back, um, I said pushing it down the road a little bit to, for inspections to go and make sure that everything is cleaned up.
Um, if we wanna refer back to committee with the, um, direction to do, complete another inspection, that's certainly possible. I'm not sure about, um, housing inspection. Um, Officer Mavis, I think, is the only person that, that's been doing the excess animal permit. Generally, it's her discretion and her inspection under Chapter Six that issues these permits. Um, but certainly if there's a separate issue on the housing side, an inspection could occur.
Okay, thank you.
Clarification, ma'am?
Um, I think we had Alder Scannell first. Are you still in the queue?
Yeah, yeah, I just feel like to speak, but I'm on time.
Okay, Alder Johnson?
More about a point, because the, the hoarding piece has come up a couple times. Yeah, I was gonna say, I wanna, I wanna clarify that that word is what was used in the report, but I don't think that this is, like, the classic definition of what you think of hoarding. It's just a lot of knickknacks and, and, and things in there. Uh, I'm not aware, nor was it reported, that there was a traditional hoarding situation going on in the home. I just wanna clear that up.
Okay. Thanks Alder. Alder Scannell?
That was one point I was gonna raise. Uh, it, it, uh, it is the concern for the animals' well-being. Is, this is strictly what it's focused on. And the point was raised about, you know, us taking on the responsibility of, um, you know, making these decisions. Well, actually, it's staff who was most involved here. Officer Mavis, and I assure you, she does a great job and does not lightly recommend that animals be removed. She did everything she could to make sure that, that wasn't happening. She worked with her to get the permits. And when the paperwork wasn't done, she followed up. She was doing what she could to make this situation work. And it was her opinion that, given the situation, the evidence she found on that second visit, that this was not healthy for the dogs, and so that's the recommendation. And I, I think we have to support and trust our staff in some of these tough decisions. Uh, so I, I'm still going to...
Did you watch the video, sir?
No.
Did you watch the body cam video?
Ma'am.
She did not work with me.
Ma'am, please. Please, ma'am.
No, I'm not leaving this podium. You're wrong. She did not work with me. She gaslighted me. She emotionally abused me in my moment till she brought me to tears. And then she accused me of being hostile in my heart.
Ma'am, you really need to refrain from further commenting?
You're wrong. And you're gaslighting me right now. How dare you say that I was suicidal? That was a lie.
Ma'am, we want you to be able to remain here.
That is what is reported, and I'm going on what is reported. And I believe the mental state here has been shown once again as it was at committee.
No, I'm standing by.
I deny, I, I do not support.
But nobody is ever to judge me for it.
Thank you.
All right, let's get to a decision here, folks. Uh, Alder Campbell?
Halftime entertainment. Um, you know, I, I, I'm really torn on this. I have one dog. My daughter has two dogs, and my other daughter has that. And during the Easter and all the holidays, it's crazy. It's crazy. And they're bigger dogs, so labs and whatever, all right? So, and I'm not comparing that, small dog, big dog. I mean, I worry about what we're opening up here for a can of worms for other people. Dogs are dogs, are dogs, cats, pets, whatever.
I think dogs are a scary dog.
I have, I, other than what we're going through here, someone that's been doing this for twenty-five years, and the way she's stated about knowing all the laws with respect to other things, I think giving her another chance, how many chances do you get? I guess. I have a really hard time with her following the rules, even if we amend them for her. I, I do see that, but overall, I'm, really do care about the dogs. It's on the fence. I, you know, if you put this on a referendum, I, I think people would probably not agree with it, or everyone would want that many pets. And then we'd have a big situation. So, it, it, it's bad to try to take away someone's pet, part of their family, but there becomes a point to where, and, and total disregard, twenty-five years of doing this, and, and you gotta know the rules. And I just think they were taken advantage of, not forgotten. And, uh, that, that's part I have a problem with. I'd like to think we could trust her to make some changes, but it's, it, it's pretty tough.
All right. Thanks Alder. So, we have a motion on the floor to approve the appeal. That was made by Alder Johnson. There's a second. You sure?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you. Um, so I appreciate the comments, and I understand why this is a difficult decision, and Alder Weary and I have talked about this in the past. Uh, neighbor-on-neighbor disputes are sometimes the most difficult things to work through. I think this is a very close second. And we've had a few of these over the years, not a time, uh, but they're never easy. And, and, you know, one of the things that I would point out is during that committee meeting, and, and Alder Scannell, you were kind of alluding to this, uh, but during that meeting, um, Ms. Bjork did impromptu invite the committee to visit her home that night. So, uh, so I want you to keep that in the back of your mind, that if this is a perpetual state of poor condition of her home, I doubt that she would have done that. And so, I, I think, um, we can make all kinds of just judgments and characterizations about what each other's homes ought to look like. Tell you what, I got plenty of dog hair laying around my house, too. Um, my dog, like I said, has gone into the house sometimes. Tell you what, not all animals pee outside. Cats are trained to, to go inside. Even some dogs are trained to go inside. Um, and if, and if keeping it clean afterwards is the situation, uh, and recognizing maybe some of the conditions that exist here, perhaps A D R C or another organization could really step in and provide some support, uh, if that's at the heart of what's happening here. But again, I go back to the fact that had the welfare check, uh, not been called in, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. We really wouldn't. Because there have been no complaints, there have been no vicious dogs, uh, there have been no conditions or situations. As Alder Weary said, he likes to go through that little checklist, and every single one of them is yes. Uh, that would be enough to support, uh, any one of you with a situation in, in your district, um, representing one of your constituents. And so, I'm here today, uh, appealing to you, uh, in a very difficult situation. It is not easy, uh, to, to support the, the motion on the floor.
Okay. Thanks Alder. So, the motion is to approve the appeal. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Nay.
The nays appear to have it.
We do the board.
We can use the board. This is on Alder Johnson's amendment to approve the appeal.
You may vote.
That fails seven to five. The motion on the floor is approval?
I'd just like to make one comment. Quick, to make it clear. That we are denying a permit. This does not remove every dog from the house, because you do not need a permit to own, uh, a couple do, two or three dogs. Two. So, uh, all we're doing is denying the appeal for extra animals. Just wanted to make that clear.
So, uh, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it?
Aye.
That item is approved.
Who seconded?
Who seconded Alder Scannell's motion initially? Anybody remember?
Yeah.
What's that?
Oh, thank you.
Alder Stor, Alder Storier? Okay. Thank you. All right. We are on to protection and policy granting operator licenses. Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any abstentions here? Names to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it? On to the report of the Plan Commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Weary. Items to be held separately?
Two.
Item two. Any others? Any none others? All in favor of remainder of that report signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it? That report has been approved, the exception of item two. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Weary. The item was pulled by Alder Hutchison.
Um, I believe we may have some individuals here who would like to speak to this issue, so I'd like to open the floor.
All right, Alder Hutchison makes the motion to open the floor.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Eck. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it. The floor is open. If you'd like to speak to this item, just approach the podium and state your name and address. This is on the telecommunications tower.
Hi, good evening, mayor members. Uh, my name is Julie Shebeck. My address is twenty-six seventy Highway twenty-two Riverside, Iowa. And I am here on behalf of United States Cellular Operating Company. We're requesting a, uh, conditional use permit to allow them to construct a telecommunications tower on the south side of Humboldt Road. The U S Army currently has antennas, um, on a water tower at six oh three Mount Mary Drive, and we've been notified that that is going to be decommissioned. So, that is why they are looking to find a new location for the tower in as close proximity as possible. So, um, there were some conditions that were put on, on the site plan, um, from the planning and zoning that, um, we know will, will need to be carried over and that we are in compliance and willing to do that. Um, uh, John Leroy, who I was working with, said that there may be some other conditions or not here, as well as, um, the site plan, um, is still in review from all the departments. So, um, I'm just here this evening to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, very good. Any questions? Thank you, ma'am. Motion to close the floor?
Motion to close the floor.
Motion to close the floor made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it? Motion on the floor is to approve. All in favor signify by saying...
Make a motion to open.
Motion to open the floor made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it. The floor is open.
Hi, my name is Linda Harrell. I am at twenty-eight eighty-four Humboldt Road, also on the south side of Humboldt Road. Um, it's right next to my yard, of course. And I guess, I guess my question is if they have looked at other sites, or why you can't keep it in the same site that it is at. And there, it's an unsteady surface, the ground there, and it's gonna be right next to the sidewalk, is one of my, uh, concerns, because the school is right there also. And across the street, that has been, uh, that steady sturdy lot for, forever. And I've lived where I have for thirty-some years, and they just keep destroying Baird's Creek. And if there's a lot right across the street, like, why can't you put it there versus wrecking that one more area that is connected to the parks and the tennis court and the field in the woods? I guess that's kind of what my concern was. I had some other ones, health issues that also come with that, like, who is gonna be responsible for, for later? You know, is it gonna be the cell people, or is it gonna be the owner of the land? Um, I don't know. I just have concerns too, really, of the sturdiness of putting it there. And you just all increased everybody's taxes in most places, which mine was pretty, you know, enough. And then putting a cell tower there right next to my house definitely will decrease my house value. Are you going to come and reassess that? Or, you know, I mean, I would like some answers on a few things, too. Um, and I know when Leonard Seidel donated that six acres and some right there, you know, to the parks and the highway department and that, or the county, I'm sure he didn't have any intentions of, you know, things going there either. It's all basically downhill. If any of you would take a look at the site, um, compared to the site across the street, who is owned by the same, uh, person, that they could maybe work out that same deal or contract or lease or whatever deal that they have going. I guess that's what, what I would like to see done, or keep it right where it's at, where the water tower is. What would be wrong with that site?
Okay. Thanks for your comments. Or, any questions from the council? No questions, thank you.
I see.
Yep. Yeah, just state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Michelle Neuen. I live at twenty-eight sixty-seven Humboldt Road and also twenty-eight sixty-nine Humboldt Road. I am directly across the street, um, from them and from where this tower is going to be. Um, so, the lot that they're picking, um, I don't know if you've all looked at it, it's very narrow, and there's not a lot of higher ground. So, the sidewalk there goes right by Baird's School. It's by the old Stratosphere, now Jimmy Sims', um, supper club. And it's this really thin lot, and there's not a lot of higher ground, and then there's a huge drop-off. So, my concern is about the safety for having a tower on this very small area next to a sidewalk, and, um, that the drop-off is, is there. That, is this really the best place for it, is actually a concern for me. So, I don't know what else I can say about that, but there, it is, um, so it's like Jimmy Sims', um, a small, narrow, long, down-the-hill lot, and then there's another lot that the same people own across the street from Jimmy Sims'. So, that's what she's talking about. There's like a turnaround, that maybe that would be a better place. Is this really the best place for this tower? Thank you.
Thanks for comments. A question from Alder Galvin?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You're saying if it was like across the street on that empty lot, across from Jimmy Sims', you'd be okay with that?
I, I feel like it's a better location because of where the ground is. This is a very narrow, sorry, very, it's, it's a long with a huge drop-off. There's not a lot of higher ground, and, um, it's gonna have to be really close to the sidewalk of where it is. Plus, I believe there's a requirement to have two car parking spots on there. I'm not really sure how this is all gonna fit on this little lot. I just don't think it's the very best place for this, um, location.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, ma'am.
I say one more thing.
Uh, real quick, yep?
I know that they're having a rezoning, uh, meeting, I think the twenty-something also. I guess I was wondering, since that parking lot and that business where, which Jimmy Sims', which used to be the Stratosphere for, you know, forever, that was one of the main businesses there, would that other side of the street be already business-owned where the parking was? I mean, I don't know, but that was what my other question was, rather than we rezone that part that, which is residential parks area. Um, if that was business, maybe you wouldn't have to rezone at all.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
No.
No? Okay.
That was my question.
Motion to close the floor?
Motion to close the floor.
Motion to close the floor made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it? The floor is closed. Uh, yeah, Alder Storier first and then...
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, yeah, that would be a question, too, you know, for Director Steck Schulte, if you could answer that particular question. While they were talking about the zoning on there, if that had any effect, or if there's gonna be a rezoning, or...
Yeah, and before we go to, um, Director Steck Schulte, I think it might be helpful for Attorney Cochar just to sort of lay out what we're able to do and what we're not, because the state legislature...
That's fine.
Wisconsin State Government has kind of preempted our abilities in, in certain areas here, so. Attorney Cochar?
Yeah, just a quick point on that, um, regarding legislation that changed in twenty-seventeen. So, unfortunately, the city's in a position where, as long as the conditional use permit, or, I'm sorry, as long as the applicant meets or agrees to meet all of the requirements that are specified, we are required to grant the conditional use permit. Uh, it's not discretionary.
Okay, thank you. And now Director Steck Schulte?
Alder, so the existing zoning across the street should remain as, that is not really part of the item here, so it should still certainly remain in place. I can actually try to pull up the actual zoning and confirm what it, what its existing zoning is, but it'll take me a minute to try to pull it up on the G I S.
Doesn't matter.
So, but it should, but yeah, this, this decision should not affect the zoning across the street.
Any other questions? Alder Eck?
Um, I just wanted to clarify. Um, so, um, it was mentioned that the, is it the water tower that's being decommissioned, or the tower on top of it, the wireless tower on that?
Director Grenier, you have the history there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Green Bay Water Utility is actually decommissioning the tower, so anything affixed to the tower has to come off as well.
Okay, so it can't be put in that same spot where the tower was? Once the tower, the water tower's removed, that tower can't stay there? As in, you know, the new wireless tower?
I, that I would have to defer to...
But point of order, Your Honor, it, it doesn't matter. We have no authority to do anything here. The state has taken away our ability to do anything here. There's nothing we can do.
Well, I mean, it's, it is important just to recognize that point of order to, you know, sort of listen to what Attorney Cochart said, which is that the state legislature has really hemmed us in here. Director Steck-Schulte on that point?
Yep, just, Alder, my assumption is that it's a publicly owned land that the city would probably retain that for some sort of public use, not, not for, allow the cell tower on it. It's a privately owned, uh, private, technically a private use, so.
Okay, thank you.
Additional comments? Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Steck-Schulte, just so that we could perhaps answer some questions that were posed. One, I think, was related to around the structural integrity of that site, right? Making sure that it's a stable site. Is there anything from your perspective that would suggest that the construction used on this site would present or pose any type of safety concern?
Would certainly agree with the, the comments regarding the topography of the site, for sure. But certainly, we have no reason to believe that the, the provider would not be accounting for that in their overall civil design related to the site, including soil borings or any other specific design elements to ensure the stability of the tower, obviously. It's certainly not in their interest to have a tower that's gonna be, that's gonna fall over and disrupt service, so.
And of course, between your department and Director Grenier's department, I assume staff will review plans, will do intermittent inspections to really ensure that everything is meeting code and is in compliance?
Correct.
Okay. And then the, the, the other question that had kind of been posed was about the reappraisal of the home. If, if someone were to want to pursue that, there is a path for them to do so, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so perhaps if, if that is of interest to you, Director Steck-Schulte could at least help identify that process. You know, we, we get these things before us occasionally that talk about, gosh, this site would be better or this use would be better. And those are really difficult situations because there are a lot of factors that go into that. Site control, who owns the land, what the zoning is, so many things, right? And that's unfortunately not what's before us. Here you have an applicant who is, of course, saying, hey, we have control of this site, and this is a use, as was alluded to by Attorney Cochart. We cannot, we really don't have the ability to deny a C U P, but what we do have the ability to do is to control the conditions. And so the conditions, which are all detailed here, that's something that we do have the approved, the, the ability to amend. When I reviewed these conditions, they seemed to be pretty thorough. I don't, I don't know that there's any additional conditions that I would add. But I think it's, you know, the Plan, the Planning Commission did the best that they could, you know, really to mitigate the impact on the neighborhood. There's really nothing else that I could think of. So I just wanted to provide some additional clarity around what that meant about the C U P and what state law allows us to do and not do. You know, if we want to come in here and, you know, add conditions or remove the ones that are on here, amend the ones that are on here, that's about where our scope ends.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments? Alder Hutchison?
Just a point of information. I'm on the Plan Commission, and I added the geotechnical data point. And I did that based on information I had gathered from the neighbors saying there's been fill placed and it's settled, and it's been over a number of years. And so I think it, once the geotechnical data is obtained with a boring or two, that will say how deep that foundation will have to be. It's gonna have to probably be deeper than typical because there's such a slope going down that if the wind is pushing to the north, the, the kick out of the foundation may occur more readily because there's no soil there. It's just a slope, so they're gonna have to go deeper. So that's why the geotechn, the geotechnical data request is there. So I think if they fulfill that, then at least geotechnically it would be sound. And that's, I just wanted to point out, that's why that's sitting there.
Thanks, Alder. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it? And that item is approved. On to the report of the Finance Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Items here to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it? That report has been approved. Personnel Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it? Public Arts.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Items here to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it? And that report has been approved. T B and P.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Items here to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it? E D A?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Items here to be handled separately?
Mayor?
Yes.
I can just be reflected as standing on item number two, as the applicant is my employer.
Alder Johnson requests an abstention noted on item two. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it? On to informational, we've got a building report for March 2023 and a municipal court report for March 2023. On to resolutions.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules and take up these items with one roll call vote. The motion was made by Alder Scannell and seconded by Alder Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it? The rules are suspended?
Motion to, um, resolution, right?
Yep. Motion to adopt has been made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens, and we will use the board.
You may vote.
And those are approved unanimously. On ordinances first reading, Director Grenier, we've got a placeholder in there.
Yeah, I think Alder...
Alder Storier's got it?
Yeah.
Very good. Alder Storier?
Yes, I'd like to make, make a motion to receive and place on file.
All right, you got him.
X two.
Alder Storier makes a motion to receive and place on file, item two, under ordinances first reading. That was seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it? So we've got one, three, and four to deal with.
Motion to suspend the rule.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to suspend the rules, take up these items with one roll call vote, seconded by Alder Eck. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it? The rules are suspended?
Motion to advance.
Motion to advance made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it? And those ordinances are advanced to a second and final reading. Petitions and communications. Looks like we've got none. Alder Johnson on adjournment.
I would make a motion to adjourn in honor...
Of Taku Ransom, the drumming lady.
Very good. Do we have a, we have a second from Alder Scannell. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it? We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.